Members of council, can you please take your seats? Members of council, I'll call the committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, May 10th to order. Mr. Clerk, just before we do the roll call, it is McCappy Day in Durham Region. Well, it's McCappy Day everywhere, everywhere. I had a meeting with the McCappy folks this morning and there is a McCappy bag in front of you. Now, if you win the big prize, it is only good in Uxbridge or in Skugog. So you will have to take the mayor, I mean either Mayor Barton or Mayor Watten out for lunch if you win the big prize. Mr. Clerk? Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Mayor Foster, I hope that levity continues for the rest of the morning. Thank you. Okay, we're members of council, we have quorum, declaration of interest. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk online, none? Okay, please note that. There are no presentations, there are no delegations. Correspondence report, we're at reports, item 7.1, Report 2023, The Updated Regional Response to the City of Oshawa Request. Sharing for Dedicated Downtown Patrol Enforcement is located on page three and there is a recommendation. Looking for a mover of the recommendation. Moved by Counselor Lee, signed by Counselor Crawford. Recommendation is now on the floor. Mayor Carter?
First of all, good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the sunglasses. I really do appreciate it. So, thank you very much. This won't come as a surprise in regards to my colleagues that are in the room that, of course, I don't support this recommendation. And I'd like to take a few moments just to speak to it, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. And I think, I want to start my remarks by thanking all the staff that were involved in regards to putting this report together. And thank you for the coordination that was undertaken to try and evaluate the challenges that not only our city, but cities all across the region of Durham, and matter of fact, across North America are facing. I speak, of course, on behalf of the great city of Oshawa. I know my colleagues will probably want to speak also in regards to it. The recommendation, of course, is in regards to an entitled update, regional response to the City of Oshawa request for cost sharing of dedicated downtown patrol enforcement. Just to start my remarks off, Mr. Chair, I wanted to make sure that my colleagues and yourself understood the depth of this particular challenge that we're having in the city of Oshawa. Between November 29th, 2021 to December 31st, 2022, our dedicated team, from seven at night till seven in the morning, in the small geographic area of the downtown core, had dealt with 5,274 incidents. From seven at night till seven in the morning, 5,274 incidents. In total, it was, if you add the daytime patrols of our team, it's 7,127 incidents that they dealt with over 365 days from that full year. This year, we've already seen an escalation in regards to the number of calls that we have, we're undertaking. Last month, our overdose calls with our fire department were 36. At approximately $160,000 cost, that that's what it's costing in regards to our overdose calls. Of those, what you should know is approximately 1,117 calls were diverted from Durham Regional Police. Our bylaw and security teams, that are specially trained, dealt with 1,017 calls because of the reason that they were criminal in nature, but our team was able to de-escalate and get compliance in regards to the criminal behavior that was undertaken. That diverted 1,017 calls from Durham Regional Police. That being said, over that 365-day period, we had to have 281 assisted calls with Durham Regional Police. And just to let you know, we are challenged with our 911 operators, and I know our deputy chief is in the room this morning. And I'm going to make this statement, and I want to get it clear and concise. I'm continuing to receive phone calls at my office that people say, when I call the police in regards to the activities that are happening in the downtown, we're told that this isn't a police matter, call the mayor. It's his responsibility. He brought it here, it's he's to deal with it. If I hear one more of those calls, I'm going to have some serious issues in regards to Durham Regional Police's response. I'm very disappointed in that. I understand if it's one person just saying it, but this is time after time after time, including my staff, that have taken the same calls. The police are not going to respond to it. I've called them, they say, call the mayor. I want to find out what's happening at our 911 dispatch and try and get that resolved. This report talks about the assistance and the support for security services. What, the point I want to try and make, Mr. Chair, is that for the last three years, our city has absorbed approximately $3 million in costs for our security and bylaw teams to work from seven at night till seven in the morning in regards to the complexities of the issue in the downtown core. What's interesting about this is, the reason why we've had to do it is because we don't have outreach workers on the street. So our security teams and bylaw teams are specially trained. They're level four security people. They're not level one, they're level four security people. And their training specifically is about wellness, medical, de-escalation, and navigation. So our approach with our security teams is very clear and concise. There's a five-step process. The five-step process is, connect with the individuals. Communicate with the individual in regards to who they are, what they are, what they're looking for, what are their challenges that they're looking for. Navigate the system. Where can you get help? Where can I get assistance? Where is a safe, safe place? Where can you get medical care? Where can I get a sandwich? Whatever. The fourth part is asking for compliance, to work with our teams. And the last component is enforcement. But their number one job is to connect with the individual to be able to find out who they are, what are their challenges, and how can we help them. The reason why we're utilizing this group is because of the reason that they're specifically trained for this type of work, to be able to help us with the most vulnerable in our community. And why are we assigned them? Because of the reason that we do not have outreach workers on the street from seven to seven. So we've tried to utilize the resources that we have at the city of Oshawa to be able to help this vulnerable population. And local taxpayers have had to contribute $3 million over the last three years in regards to this particular initiative. And this initiative is health-related, it's social services-related, it's not city core responsibilities. But we've utilized the resources that we have to be able to meet the needs of this complex community. Now, Mr. Chair, I have a binder with me, and you've been good enough to be able to continue to take all my emails and photos and phone calls, and matter of fact, my therapy sessions, so I appreciate that. But I brought just this kind of demonstration, and this demonstration here is just a demonstration of some of the kind of things that we face on a daily basis with the amount of carnage that is there. If you go by where one of our, one of a hub in downtown Oshawa right at this particular time, we have open drug use, intervening, the intervening as drug use that is going on at this particular time, on a daily basis, on Simcoe Street, a one-way street that only goes from the south to the north. Open drug use, not one or two people, but several people. And our bylaw and our security people are trying to do their best in regards to addressing it. We've even tried to get the church and the organization that runs the backdoor mission there to also have care and control of the area unsuccessfully. Now, my criticism also is, is that we have over 100 police cars that drive by that location every day. You know why? It's because they have to get back up to the station. And I'm curious of why we're not able to address a criminal activity on our streets on a daily basis, and I'm frustrated. In the report, it states that the regional team talked to the chambers of commerce and the boards of trade. And I don't see any correspondence from them, and I was hoping to be able to see what the correspondence was in regards to it. And I wanted to try and understand where this information came from. It says, based on local conversations, I'm on page six of 23, page four of 12 of Report Cow 19. Based on the conversation with the local businesses and the experiences of economic development staff with business attraction and investment efforts, the view is expressed that private security patrols and downtown centers could mitigate negative impacts on local businesses, community, business investment, and retention. What I can tell you is that this is contrary to what I've heard from our chamber of commerce, the Greater Oshawa Chamber of Commerce, that has made sure that the 800 businesses that they represent have been very clear and concise. I have letters with me today of part of my binder that I get to be able to carry on a daily basis from different organizations and different landowners that are contrary to what is going on. And I can, I can share this document, this JSR management document, that has photographs and the impact. Matter of fact, they tried to light the building on fire just recently, and thank goodness the sprinklers worked, that they were able to put the sprinklers out. But I have to challenge where this information came from, because when I speak to the Greater Oshawa Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Oshawa Chambers of Commerce has been in our corner of being able to say, we need these services. You know, Saturday night, I was at Avante's Restaurant. Why? Because of the reason that somebody had taken a whole bunch of syringes from one of our distribution points and dumped it on their patio. We don't have any teams on at that time, so as the mayor of the great city of Oshawa, I had to go down there and clean it up myself. So I'd like to get some clarification about, you know, what, where did that information come from? Can somebody answer that in regards to the chambers of commerce? Because this is contrary to what I've heard. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
So our CAO respond?
Thank you.
Yes, I will turn it over to Simon Gill, Director of Economic Development, but I can tell you that staff from the CAO's and Economic Development Office had in-person meetings with these groups. Simon and Sandra, I'm not sure if you want to add anything else.
Yes, thanks very much. And yes, Mayor Carter, we did meet with the Oshawa Chamber of Commerce. We do have a summary document. We've provided some highlights within the report. We very much thought it was appropriate to anonymize the responses that we received directly, but more than happy to have a follow-up conversation with you. As you know, in the development of the integrated and quite lengthy list of recommendations that staff had pulled together under the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, there were many of those business groups, BIA's, chambers of commerce, and economic development municipal staff that we spoke to. So in some cases, we were going back and very much having the same conversation. We are well aware of various positions and experiences that these BIA's and chambers are facing. So yes, we do have that detailed. We made the conscious decision to anonymize it, but more than happy to provide you with some follow-up.
Thank you very much for that. I greatly appreciate it. It's just, it is very much contrary to what we're getting, Mr. Chair. And I'm not saying, I'm not disagreeing with what Ms. Austin said. I'm just saying that my experience over the last three years especially is on the contrary. There's also a perception that, you know, security personnel have a negative impact in regards to our business and our business community. And I'm surprised at that comment because of the reason that one of the biggest things that our team has asked for, our business community has extra patrols by police, which we're very grateful that at the end of this month, we'll have those extra patrols on the streets of downtown Oshawa and surrounding areas. But we've also had to put a CIP program in to be able to put cameras, gates, and security measures in regards to SEPTAB for our businesses and our business communities. On top of that, they've asked for the extra patrols in the downtown just as having a presence. But, you know, part of the report says it may have a negative effect, and I draw this kind of thing and go, so does the Oshawa Center, do they also have a negative effect because they have so many security guards in their place? Or does the hospital, does people stop going to the hospital because there's security people? No. I think it's a sense that that's where that service is needed, and those individuals play an important part in regards to the safety of everyone, and that that's what their roles and responsibilities are. I am, I'm not here to say that, I understand the region, what their position is. They're saying that, you know, private security, we invest into policing, and that's the role of the region. The tax dollars go to that. What I'm saying is, we've had to utilize specialized services to be able to do outreach on our streets because of the reason that the region doesn't have those services available. And those services are vital in regards to making sure people get the right service in the right time in the right place. And the only tools we had was two things, our bylaw and our security people. They're not law enforcement officers. That's not what they're, that's, our bylaw people are not law enforcement officers. They're not there to stop criminal behavior. But I've been able to find a dedicated team to be able to help those individuals that are most vulnerable. The reason why we fought so hard about people just handing out sandwiches was because of the reason that we look at it, that we have to have a coordinated effort to help these people that are most vulnerable. Our security and bylaw teams play an important part of making sure that we get those people in there. We had 27 people on my security call yesterday morning, 27 new people from Toronto and Peterborough are in our downtown. 27 that shared their information, and you know what the good news about it is? They shared it with us so that we could help them be able to find the right resources. And that didn't happen between seven in the morning and seven at night. It happened from seven at night till seven in the morning. They play a vital role. I'm saying to our colleagues, yes, Oshawa is absorbing a huge amount of the most complex health issue we've ever faced in this country. But I know Ajax is now experiencing, I know Whitby's experiencing this. And soon, other municipalities will see the unbelievable impacts on our businesses, our residents, and our citizens. People can't walk our streets because they don't feel safe. They're blocked by using public spaces. And even under the criminal code, we can't even do it because of the reason that individuals don't have identification, and people feel that this is not a good use of law enforcement's time. And the pendulum has swung to the opposite direction in regards to the rights of some, are circumventing everybody else's rights. My request under this is to support the city of Oshawa and whoever else needs help in regards to this specialized service. I'm fortunate because of the reason that I have security and bylaw officers that are trained, that have taken the job on, and by the way, our security and bylaw people that are doing this job are volunteering to do this job. They're saying, I've got this skill, I've worked in this environment, I worked at TCHC, I worked on the streets in Toronto, and I know how to do this in regards to de-escalation, navigating wellness checks. Our security and bylaw teams are administering naloxone on a regular nightly basis to save people's lives. I asked my colleagues to support us in regards to this because of the reason that this service is vital. And at this particular time, the region doesn't have the resources to be able to implement those people on the street starting tonight. But I've got the team that's on the street tonight. What I'm asking for is to support us in regards to the investment that we've made because of the reason that this vulnerable population needs to help tonight. So I yield the floor at this time, Mr. Chair, and I thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you. Mayor Collier, you were on the list and you bounced off. Did you wish to speak?
As a growing concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, a few years ago, I would have not quite understood the full impact of unsheltered in a municipality. And I would have to say, over the last number of years, it has become abundantly clear, sadly in Ajax, and also like understanding now Oshawa, I've spent a few meetings with Dan and understanding the frustration and the cost and the time, and the region does a great job at, you know, at their, at the care and partnering with municipalities. The police are spending an exorbitant amount of time, in my opinion, in, I can only speak to Ajax. And we've had a great deal of support with the police in our town. But our situation is not nearly as extreme as Oshawa. I support Mayor Carter and his plea for help because I feel like we're maybe a year or two away from the same situation if we don't somehow get a handle on it. And it's just frightening because we're having our second community unsheltered meeting tonight. The first one was extremely uncomfortable with our community. I don't expect that this one will be any better. The businesses are suffering where, you know, in our downtown. And so it's not really a question, and I apologize for that. If you want, I can make a question. But I do want to say that I fully support Oshawa and their ask here.
Sorry, Counselor Nicholson? Counselor Nicholson, your call's dropped. Can you please push your request to speak button again?
Hear me okay, Mr. Chairman?
We can hear you now. Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, first of all, I want to wholeheartedly support the comments of Mayor Carter. He actually has spoken in a very polite and informative way. The calls we get from our constituents, from the businesses in downtown, from people who are at their wit's end trying to deal with this, you aren't as polite. We're talking not just about nuisance factors here. It's easy, and I read the report, I had to read it a couple of times, it seemed to, in my view, downplay the seriousness of what we're undergoing within the community. If our staff, our security staff, were not on duty, people would have died. It's as simple as that. The fact that our staff respond, not just to criminal activities, but to people who have addiction issues, people who have mental health issues, people who have physical issues on their health, the fact that they're there and they're able to respond and then escalate to either to the police or to our emergency services as needed, is saving lives. So we're not just dealing with a nuisance here. We're dealing with an ongoing societal problem. And yes, we can point to the various steps that have been taken by the region, and we're all appreciative of the steps that have been taken to date. But we have to be honest with ourselves as a council. What we've taken to date has not been enough. And the proof of that statement is that we, just a few weeks ago, wrote to the province and said, this is an emergency. You need to step up to the province. The premier and the cabinet and the parliament need to step up and provide both funding and assistance to deal with this emergency. But when Oshawa reaches out in a similar manner to the upper tier, to the regions of Durham, to ask for the region to step up, we're met with, sorry, we can't, or it's not our role. Well, if dealing with the health and safety of our citizens in Durham is not the role of Durham, whose is it? Who bears the responsibility of providing the service? You know, every time we ask, we get told, we already paid $250 million to the police. And the police are stretched to the breaking point now, even with that investment. And the police will tell you, they don't have the staff to step in and replace this security service that Oshawa is currently providing from the taxes of the lower tier only. So if the region's social services is not going to be part of the solution, and the region's not going to contribute, and the police service says they can't under their current funding model, who's left? Are we just simply to turn our backs and say, it's not our problem? If Oshawa shuts down the security service, people will die. People will be injured. Those are facts. Those are not opinions. They're happening every day in the community. And I urge my colleagues here at Durham Nation to think long and hard on that. Ask yourselves, how would I vote if this was happening in my community? If it was in the downtowns of Uxbridge and Brock and Clarrington and Pickering and Ajax and Whitby and Skugog? If this were happening to this extreme in your communities, would you be here supporting the recommendation that the staff had put forward? Or would you be joining and making the same plea that Mayor Carter just made? And I ask you to look seriously. This is not a request that's frivolous. And it's not a request that sometimes happens where the lower tier says, let the upper tier do it. Oshawa has stepped up. And we're spending millions of lower-tier dollars to address this issue. And very simply, I'll put it to you this way, we need help. We need the region to be a partner in this process, not just in the services you're providing to date, but also providing the security services that save lives. And all I can say to you is, to my colleagues, is I know that this region has a big heart. And I know this region has the funds to provide the service. And I know this region has the funds to provide this service. Region has millions upon billions in reserves. You're not turning your back on the city of Oshawa. Our municipality will function regardless. You're turning your backs, if this motion carries, on the people that need the help the most. And I ask you very simply, is that the message you really want to send? I urge you to defeat this motion and work with the city of Oshawa, with the town of Ajax, with every lower-tier municipality, to develop a program of support to address this growing problem. Because if you don't do it now, you'll be doing it everywhere in Durham sooner or later. It's important that we step forward today, and I ask you to support Mayor Carter's plea. Thank you.
Counselor Brenner?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's, it was very, it's very touching and very sad when you hear what is going on in the city of Oshawa. And Mayor Carter was right on point when he was drawing parallels to other communities. And I can't, and I know that he referenced one that was dear to my heart, having worked for 40 years with Toronto Community Housing. And he's right that we need to, together collectively as a region, support the city of Oshawa. Because as Counselor Crawford said, it's only a matter of time before Ajax will be experiencing it. It's only a matter of time, as we heard from Counselor Nicholson, before other municipalities, such as the city of Pickering, will experience it. Each of our municipalities are unique in such a way that they know best in terms of how to address, and that's consistent with our community safety wellbeing plans. But that was never intended to put the kind of dollars that the city of Oshawa has been putting into it. I certainly will be voting in opposition to the recommendation, not because I don't appreciate and respect the staff position, but because, as a region collectively, I believe, and I do know in my heart, we do care, and we would stand up and support any of the municipalities when a plea like this has been made. It's really about saving lives, and it's really about helping those that are marginalized and unfortunate. And for that reason, Mr. Chairman, I'm certainly on board in voting no to the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Pickles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I certainly can't express the issue in the way that Mayor Carter has, but Mayor Carter and Counselor Chapman will recall that I did go out to Oshawa and have a drive around with them. So they are not embellishing what is going on there. And I was there, thankfully, during the daytime as opposed to the evening. I can only imagine what it would be after that. The report that we have in front of us, I'm just reading page 12 of 12, 6.4. It indicates regional staff will continue to work with Oshawa, Whitby, Ajax, and other local partners to address short-term action, performance metrics, communications, intergovernmental advocacy, to address these complex issues and surrounding homelessness. So if I could, Mr. Chair, maybe to the CIO, could I understand better whether continue means continue the level of service and resources that we presently have committed? Or, as I think Mayor Carter has expressed in others, is that's not doing the job, additional services and resources are required. So could I understand better what the intention of staff is in 6.4? I think that might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I may turn it over to Commissioner Stella Danos-Papa Konstantinou. We have been increasing funding directly from the region for housing and homelessness in recent years and continue to do so. We do know there's significantly more that we need to do, and the review by ORC code confirmed that. We have some funding in the 2023 budget for outreach workers that are directly employed by the region, and the view would be to continue to expand these services going forward. In addition, the commissioner, our team and works facilities continue to look aggressively for additional shelter space and space where we can provide the appropriate wraparound services for the most vulnerable and those with mental health and addiction issues within the community. And we continue to work closely with Lake Ridge Health and Ontario Shores with a view to providing the necessary supports. We are also, as council directed, out launching an advocacy strategy, both provincially and federally, that will be the subject of a report next week. I acknowledge that there are no quick hits to this, but the amount of, the level of service that the region is providing has been growing incrementally for the last five years. We still have a ways to go, and I, the CFO and myself continue to ensure that there's additional resources for this in every budget. Now, I know that the commissioner is on virtually with us. She's at a Social Services Association meeting today, and I'll ask Stella if there's anything that you would like to add in terms of our vision for expanding services this year and then the next few years. We can't hear you, Stella, sorry.
Now you can hear me. Okay, sorry about that. Through the chair, Elaine, you did describe everything that we're looking to do at this point in time moving forward. I did take a report, and there was a presentation at last week's Health and Social Services Committee that did talk about current state of homelessness issues across Durham, because, of course, we need to look across Durham, and we're looking at all of our stats and trying to identify where the needs are and how we're going to move forward. We've been asked to consider street outreach locally with our own staff, and that is an area that we're looking at. We're looking to expand ours. It doesn't happen overnight. People are working hard to address this and create the right rules, functions, to be able to serve this community. But you know that we've expanded our PCOP program. We have our mental health outreach program out on the streets. And we're also continuing to support the local hubs with the services that they need. And as Elaine said, we are looking at some options for expanded shelter, housing, health support systems. And that report will be coming, the next report for homelessness will be coming to the next Health and Social Services Committee in June.
Well, I think the commissioner for that clarification. I guess that what I'm struggling with there, what the conundrum I have, is that the recommendation is that we continue to decline the request for cost sharing. The 6.4 says we're going to continue to assist, but the staff response, I think, is better, that we're going to expand our assistance and, I'm not sure, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but provide additional services. And I think if we, if I had a better idea that there was going to be an expansion of services and additional resources, I would be more comfortable. But I think the answer is, we need to provide additional services, assistance, and resources. I'm not sure if that's jumping out at me in the report we have in front of us. So I hope there's a way that we can maybe make that clearer, that the additional services and resources are there or can be provided to help the mayor and the municipality. So I'm interested in seeing what everybody else has to say. Thank you.
Members of council, if you'll just bear with me for one minute, I'm just, I want to have a conversation with a clerk. Members of council, I don't normally do this. I'm going to ask for a 10-minute recess. And just, I'll need a mover and a secondary. So I think hands went up over here first. The forever hopeful Toronto Maple Leaf supporter, Counselor Lee. And seconded by Counselor Leahy on a 10-minute recess. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Mayor Carter, can I see you for a minute? Six. Four of six. Because you need 24-hour coverage.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we have quorum. Members of council, because of the emergency nature of this item, I'm going to ask that the mover of the original motion and the seconder withdraw their withdraw their support for the item. So the mover was? Councillor Lee? And councillor Crawford? You both agree to remove? Okay, councillor Lee? Councillor Crawford? That's a yes. I'm going to have to ask, is there any other member of council that wants to move the existing recommendation? Okay, Mr. Clerk, I see none. Mr. Clerk, we have an item that we've been working on. And I'm going to, the speakers list is gone, so thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you put that item up for members of council to see, please? Okay. There's a new motion on the floor. It's on your screens, members of council. I'll let you read it. Pardon? Yeah, there's just a grammatical correction in the third paragraph. The should be that. Recognizing that. Okay. Can I just get a show of hands? Has everybody had an opportunity to read that? Okay. Mayor Carter, I'm not allowed to move motions from the chair, so I need to get this onto the floor. Okay, so move by move? I was just looking for a nod, but that's okay.
Oh, sorry. Let's give it a go again. Go ahead, I'll speak again.
Would you, would you please move this? Okay, thank you. And a seconder is Mayor Collier. So. Well, we'll record a vote at the end. Okay. Members of council, the item is now before you. We'll go back to the speakers list. The first in the speakers box is Mayor, Mayor Collier. But just so everyone understands, and maybe it's not, this will be applied regionally when it's, when it comes into effect. It's not just about one community. And I will start with the first. So Mayor Collier, first in the chat box.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm glad to see this amendment. I had my hand up in the past after hearing some of the other comments to, just to do some clarification. And I'm very glad that it's been recognized that this is a regional problem. Nobody else has to the extent that Oshawa has, absolutely. I believe Ajax is about 25, 26% and others have varying degrees. I'm very glad to hear you say, Chair, that this is going to be a regional program. And that was my first question when I just saw this. So this motion is that the region of Durham compensate City of Oshawa for 50% of its 2023 special security costs with an offset limit of $500,000. While I was waiting to speak, I actually reached out to my staff just to see and just to give you some perspective. We have incurred $379,000 in Ajax since 2020 and our annual cost is about $130,000. Not to the same extent as Oshawa, but still significant dollars. My question through to staff is, what would the regional program look like? How are we going to sort of umbrella this across the region as a proportional? Would it not be better to have this say, instead of City of Oshawa, that the region of Durham compensate municipalities for 50% of their 2023 special security costs up to a maximum of $500,000?
I'll go to our CAO.
I think the, the recommendation related to Oshawa, related to A, the outstanding request, but also recognition of the severity of the situation in Oshawa. The intent of launching the outreach program, which was envisioned as part of the 2023 budget with the two supervisors being retained, is that we would be able to address these issues on a region-wide basis. This motion will allow us to advance that more expeditiously. The staff were looking at how to secure outreach workers from within existing resources, which would mean program cuts in other areas. This will hopefully avoid that. And it's the hope that between getting this group launched in the next three to six months and the additional work that we're doing in securing shelter and supportive and transitional housing space over the next six months, that by 2024, we should be ahead of the game. But the, the intent with the $500,000 was in recognition of the severity and the long-term nature of the situation in Oshawa.
Okay. Do we know how long that will take for this to be looked at at a regional basis, a region-wide basis?
So the staff will be recruited and hired this year? They will be training with the specialized outreach staff in Oshawa? And should be totally in effect by January 2nd of next year. Madam CAO?
Yes, I'm actually hoping that we'll be able to double team for training in the last three months of the year. But in fairness, I will ask that our Commissioner of Social Services and the Director of Social Services have the time to work out the program implementation. I know the posting for the two supervisors, I believe, is intended to go live this week. So we are going to move as quickly as we can on this.
I, thank you for that, but I meant for that, I'm happy to hear that that will be taken care of in Oshawa this year, but for the regional wide for the other municipalities?
January 2nd.
Okay, so we will wait. Just, just speak to it quickly. I'm happy to support, happy to second. Mayor Carter, you've done an amazing job championing this all the way through on all of our behalf, so thank you. This is a growing problem. We, I'll just speak to Ajax because that's what I know. Have turned one of our municipal buildings over to a shelter. It's full every night. It has been full every night since I think we opened in February. I'm also told that we had a, a death last night. I'm trying to confirm that right now, but I mean, I, I'm pretty sure that probably is the case. So it is a big issue. I, I'm hoping if there's any way that we can roll this out regionally quicker, that'd be great. We are still doing what we can to work with the region as far as providing space and providing resources and providing our own security because it's needed to protect the businesses, protect the residents and everything else because there are many, many other problems. We all know that DRPS does a great job, but are, are stretched pretty thin and have to operate on a tiered basis, I'll call it, a priority basis. And unfortunately, if there's a major conflict or some violent something, that's where they have to be. So these resources are needed. I do look forward to this putting put in place very quickly and rolled out across the region as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor Nicholson. Councillor Nicholson?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Just a, I got a question for clarification, if I could. Where did the number of $500,000 come from? Is that just an estimate or is that based on any actual projected expenditures?
It was based on actual projected expenditures that we received from the city of Oshawa.
Okay. Secondly, would I then read into this motion that as expected, the special security costs will extend beyond 2023, that any future Durham region compensation to the state of Oshawa would be included in the upcoming budget rather than as a standalone motion?
What the motion says is that as part of the 2024 budget process, we will review the need for ongoing special security in the hopes that by adding the outreach program across the region, it will reduce the requirement for those additional services as we will have professional region, regional employees acting as outreach workers.
Okay, but outreach workers are not security staff. So I guess the question I'm putting to you is that we're not excluding the possibility of having both trained outreach workers and still supporting the security staff for handling the other issues that are related to that. Have I understood that correctly?
We're prepared to take a look at how things are going to that end, but the understanding is that much of the benefit of the private security is the outreach services that they're providing. So we are now converting this to a regional service where it more appropriately belongs. If we find that there's an additional period of transition required as part of the 2024 budget, yes, we would consider it then and it would not have to be a separate report as it is today.
Okay. Bear with me because I'm confused by the response. Right now, we have level four security staff dealing with a wide range of issues, including health, addiction, everything in the downtown. It appears that the regional program will deal with some of that. So I guess the question I'm putting here is, is this a one-time commitment? Or if the problem exists beyond the end of 2023, is the region projecting to step up and replace the contributions in whole that the state of Oshawa is doing under its current special security program?
Councillor Nicholson, you've heard our, our CAO respond to you and said that it would be reviewed.
Well, the question I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, is what will be reviewed? Is it just the outreach or is it the special security costs as well?
The special security costs.
All right, thank you very much. That's the clarification I saw. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody needed to go to McHappy Day. Mayor Foster?
I don't know how to follow up on that, Mr. Chair. I, I honestly don't. And I, I will remember that, Mayor Ash. Oh, boy, will I. No, just a couple of things. Firstly, to staff for bringing this forward, thank you. This, this is an issue that is coming to a neighborhood near you. And as much as Clarrington is experiencing a tiny, tiny, tiny bit of this, our, our residents are tired, our, our businesses are tired of this. I do want to stand up for staff because there were comments made earlier that the region is refusing to stand up. The region is saying, sorry, we can't help. The region is saying not our role. As we read the report and as we heard from the CAO, this council, in the last budget, responding to staff's recommendations, put a significant increase into homelessness, into issues like this. You know, there were increases in this budget, which was not supported, by the way, unanimously by council. If you want to fix something, you've got to resource it. So, so I, I took umbrage at those comments and I want to thank staff for what they're doing. Having said that, supporting this, we need to do something. This is an immediate problem. And for member, many members of the public, we need to be seen to be doing something now. It's about feeling safe and secure in downtowns at concerts in the park. It's about businesses, knowing that people feel welcomed in their areas. And we are seeing on any number of levels, you know, challenges. Take the number of stores who now, for insurance purposes, in, in downtown Bowmanville, you, you need to be buzzed in. You know, stores that in some cases, longstanding businesses where you always just walked in. So it is a sign of the times. This is a, a good start. Mayor Collier, thank you for the questions. It has to be region-wide, but it's got to start somewhere. So I, I will support this. I thank staff for all that they have done. I thank staff for what they are doing moving forward. And I, I would suggest though, as much as the regional outreach workers, if we hear from DRP that they need additional staff, because Mayor Carter is, is taking a hard line on people who break the law, as should happen. If we hear moving forward from DRP that they need more staff, I, I would hope that council will support that as well because I, I think that, I, I think that this is going to be something that, that is going to need to be integrated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Schumer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate all the comments that have been made. I, I appreciate the frustration of the residents and, and members of council from, from Oshawa. It's certainly nothing anybody wants. But I, I have a real problem with, with how this is going. This is a precedent-setting move.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you lean into your screen so you're closer to your microphone, please?
Okay, sorry, can you hear me? Okay?
And try not to move around so much, please.
Okay. I appreciate. I appreciate staff for the for the report and and comments in it. I, as I said, I I understand that there is a huge level of frustration on behalf of the residents of Oshawa and the members of of council. But this is a huge precedent precedent-setting motion, in my opinion. You know, we passed our 2023 budget. We passed that just a few weeks ago. And I have to tell you, there's more, there's more discussion at today's meeting on this matter than there was on that budget. As as Mayor Foster commented, we we, I think, are funding social services at a at a record pace going into this year. DRPS came in above, slightly above guideline. And and, you know, now we're hearing today how social services seem to be failing it, DRPS seems to be failing it. I think the responsibility rests with regional programs and regional departments. I I have a real problem with the first part of the motion, especially since that is certainly, in my opinion, a precedent precedent-setting situation there. And and I I can't, I I can't support this motion, unfortunately. I I I'm really sorry to to my colleagues, but I I think this, this is not new. Nobody's, nobody's sitting here saying this is new. We all know it's not new. Where was the discussion a few weeks ago? Where was the discussion about increasing even beyond what it was already increased? What was the just increased DRPS and and social services budget to account for extra programs? I I I'm sorry, I can't support this. I I really hope this becomes a regional program. I'm I'm just not getting enough information here, I don't think, on it. But I I think certainly at least the the first part of this motion is is precedent-setting, and I think all members of regional council better remember this day. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. There are numbers, requests to speak. The next is Counselor Neal. Counselor Neal?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I I fully support this, and I'm gonna tell you why. Is Mayor Carter mentioned 27 people that had come, that had come in at a certain timeframe over the weekend? Well, that wasn't all, the 27. There was thousands that came in to Durham Region at the Ontario Open Provincial, 2023 Provincials, at the Tribute Center. Thousands of people lined up Sunday from that down the sidewalk in that center trying to get in, families there, grandparents, for that tournament. It was huge. That's a provincial tournament. They came from Belleville, Sudbury, everywhere. And you know what? They spent money across the region, staying at hotels, restaurants. I know personally where they ate and it was. So having said that, I fully support what this motion brings forth because it affects the whole region, just as Mayor Carter stated and other councillors have stated, affects the whole region. And if you think that something like some health of the region doesn't pay off in the long run, it does in short term and the long run. And I really hope that everybody supports this because, like I say, it affects the whole region in regards to any kind of tournament or any kind of event that takes place across the region, the whole region. We have an economic development department in the region and they'll tell you that the whole region benefits. And as COVID had taken place, these restaurants and hotels need that, need that business. So we have to make sure that when people, families and that come into these downtowns for these events, that we have a secure place and they go back and tell their neighbors and their politicians and everybody else that this is a great region to come and have a tournament and spend money. So having said that, I appreciate, if someone hasn't asked for a recorded vote, I will. Thank you.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Chair Henry. Just a question regarding the motion, if we could perhaps add an additional item to that to maintain the spirit of recommendation B from the original report, which just simply stated that the region as a whole will continue to assist those in our community who are vulnerable by continuing investment. I think we've lost sight of that overarching additional piece that I think is necessary because it extends to our homelessness, mental health and addictions issues. Just wondering if we could include something of that nature that expands upon this motion. And and like many of my colleagues, I I will be supporting this new motion that's been brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, or sorry, Mayor Watten?
Thank you, Chair. Just many of my comments have been echoed in the chamber here. Quite, quite simply, I would say, for a very complex issue, that we spend thousands and thousands of dollars on creating programs and ways to invest in Durham and to make Durham the best it can be. And my only thought is, we can't be the best it can be if we're not whole. And our downtowns have to be whole as well as all the other areas. So I fully support this. I thank staff for all they've done to this point and will continue to do. And I look forward to the implementation and the rollout of how further we can keep our area safe. So thank you. As I said, most of my other comments have been said, so I won't repeat them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Leahy.
Thank you, Chair. Again, fully supportive of the motion that's here on the floor. Appreciate the plight here in Oshawa. But again, looking forward to how we can help out all downtowns, as has been stated before. We're having some challenges in Whitby as well. And appreciate this, this is a region-wide issue, which is why it needs some region-wide support. Appreciate staff's work to date. It's been great. Looking forward to having more outreach workers to support Oshawa. Just as we're mindful and moving forward, the resources required to expand this and get to other things. Specifically, we have challenges in Whitby, I know there's challenges in Ajax, and every, in every, in every community. So just keeping that in mind, fully supportive of this, supporter of the budget, supporter of more resources for this issue as as it unfolds in the months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lee?
Thank you, Chair. Through the chair to, I guess, staff. Would the two outreach office supervisors be available for training for, should any other municipality start engaging in the use of MLEs for their own municipalities?
So we haven't, the, the job goes out this week, so allow staff the opportunity to put the job descriptions together. And I'm sure that today they heard your comments.
Sure. I think it's really important that we set a standard. So, you know, as Mayor Carter had outlined, this, you know, this, I think, level four, which I'd never heard of that concept before. It's fantastic if that is the ideal and that's, it's happening in practice. And ultimately, I I just want to make sure there's also a connection point for the unsheltered, should this ideal not be fulfilled? Should there be any kind of complaints of the way they're being treated? I understand there's no universal acceptance. You know, people always have issues with any sort of enforcement, but I just want to make sure that we are maintaining the dignity and humanity of our unsheltered and not necessarily going straight to a policing method. So it goes back to just my training suggestion of, I think if we have a uniform training standard outlined by these supervisors, it'll go a long way to building trust in this program. Other than that, I do absolutely support the program. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a shame that it's needed, but it's, as Oshwa stated, it's, it's absolutely a crisis that needs action immediately.
So Counselor Lee, the outreach workers will, there's, be standard for the entire region, so they will all be treated in every community equally in effect?
I think I was more speaking the case, again, I think the idea of multiple municipal law enforcement is becoming more and more adopted across Ontario and Canada. And I I was thinking more of a standards across the board for those rather than our own regional ones. So perhaps our regional outreach workers could be the standard for future MLEs should that occur.
The challenge for us is we don't control municipal bylaw.
No, no, of course.
But I'm sure that the mayors in the room might suggest that they get together with their directors of bylaw and have that very conversation.
And share best practices, 100%.
Share best practices.
Thank you, Chair.
Standardization of practices. Mayor Carter, there's a lot of people before I come back to you, so I just, I just didn't want you to think I'm bypassing. Okay, Mayor Barton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I, we're facing a pretty significant challenge here. I think this is a step in the right direction, but but I hope that we continue to use all of our resources together. We've increased our funding for homelessness prevention and we've been throwing money at this for a long, long time. We obviously need to support Oshwa. This, this is the epicenter of the issue. We just need to make sure that we're being very strategic and using all of our resources effectively, whether it's social services, local bylaw, policing efforts, and this. I just want to make sure that we all know that bypassing this, this doesn't make this issue go away. This is the first step to solving this crisis before, before we're all dealing with it in a, in the same way Oshwa is. So let's make sure we're really strategic as we work through this. I will be supporting the motion. I just wish I didn't have to, but this is, this is a step we need to take. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKay?
Sorry, is that me?
That's you.
Thank you, hi. Thank you, Chair. Happy to see this come back as a regional solution and recognizing that Oshwa is ahead of us with their homeless population, but that we're all heading that direction. Last week, we had our symposium at AMO and we learned very clearly that the cure is not in our hands. The cure is in the the federal and provincial levels of government. We're just putting Band-Aids on and treating the symptoms of homelessness. So, you know, we know that the the cure is actually, in the long run, cheaper than what we're doing with the Band-Aids. This is the cost of homelessness. That's what this is. And, you know, if if we can, you know, take this and understand that we have to do this, however, the solution is above our heads and we need to continue to advocate. And I think that this is exactly why this shows everyone exactly why we need to advocate. It comes down to dollars and cents. And by by treating the cure at at the provincial and at the federal level, we won't have to do this so much. So anyhow, I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kerr?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I don't do virtual very often. I have a pretty bad foot. I can't walk today. So just a couple of points that haven't been mentioned yet. This is not about security. Yes, number five on the list, you know, our our security people. And let me tell you, this is my word, so I probably have a little bit more in-depth understanding of this. This is not just about securing property. The other four items above that on the list is all about the safety and care and health of our residents who primarily come out at night. They sleep during the day. So when you look at those numbers that were presented earlier, 7,000, roughly 7,100 client interactions, 5,200 of those were done at night by Oshwa staff. That's a 260% more than what were covered during the day by regional staff. There is a cost to that, and I, it might be interesting to know what the cost of that level of service is because that's what's needed. And why is it needed? Because in the year prior to the city of Oshwa, rolling out this enhanced health and care and safety of our residents program, not one, not 10, 46 overdose, overdose deaths in this area in the year before, one year. Something had to be done. I understand, you know, this, the region hasn't ramped up the program yet and we're looking to do that and all the rest of it, but this had to be done because people were dying out there. It's not, it's somebody's, they're not numbers, they're not statistics, they're somebody's son or daughter, or mother or father, or grandparent. They were dying in record numbers. That's why this was done. This wasn't because we want to hire more security personnel. Yeah, that's not a regional function. This is healthcare. This is people to interact with the people who need it most at the time of day they need it most. That's what this is about. And whilst I am, in some ways, disappointed that the taxpayers of Oshwa had to foot the bill for that 260% level of additional service, and while I am happy that there's some of the money coming back for this year, nothing for 2020, 2021, or 2022. I guess we absorbed that. And I'm happy to see that we're looking at going across the region because my colleagues in other cities are starting to tell me stories as well. So I get it. I'm, I have to say, I'm disappointed there isn't some retroactive compensation for this, for the city doing what technically the region ought to have done but didn't have the staff to do. And I'm disappointed, I have to be honest, that that's not taking place. I guess we'll take what we can get and, and, you know, one of my colleagues mentioned earlier, he couldn't support this. Excuse me, I'll just turn off the phone. He couldn't support this, couldn't see the reason why perhaps. This is the reason why. This needs to be supported and it needs to be set up for the future health and welfare of all of our residents in the region, not just Oshwa. But by golly, we sure have a big problem in Oshwa. I'm helpful, I'm thankful for the support. It's, it's not what we ought to have received, I think, personally, but thank you very much. And by golly, I sure will be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Jobb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I'm gonna put a motion to divide, if I can, the motions, just because A, A of the motion is precedent-setting, but B and C, to me, are at least regional resources to provide further assistance. Is that possible?
Well, motion divide is always in order, but you will need a second or on the division. So on division, the motion to divide has been moved by Counselor Jobb, seconded by Mayor Ash. Mr. Clerk, it's to call for a, we'll do two recorded votes and we'll call, the vote on A would be the first vote, and we'll do B and C. Does that work for you? Okay, so is that, that the only part you wanted?
That's perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, the motion to divide, I'll call the vote, all those in favor? A recorded vote on division.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Okay.
You're absent, you can't vote. I'm sorry, Counselor McDougal, and it's a tie.
No, it's a tie because he was in the system and he defaults to a no because they didn't cash the absence, so it carries by one. It's 1413, attendance was 27.
So it carries, the vote is?
Would you like me to?
I'll have you explain it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor McDougal was absent, however, he was in the system when we launched the vote, which caused him to default to a no. The results were 1413, however, the system recorded as 1414 due to the erroneous absence. So it does carry by one, and these are the individual results.
So the division is carried. Okay. All right, back to the list. Counselor Chapman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all the comments that have come today, this morning, and in this council working together on a very large and important issue that's affecting our region and many other regions. I realize, as all of us do, I think that this is a growing issue within the region. And I think from this motion that most of my colleagues have recognized that Oshwa has been ground zero for this problem that we have in in dealing with this. I think the the wording, the motion is excellent because if you take A, it talks about special security costs. I want to go back to what Mayor Carter said. It's not the normal security guard that people think, the ones that are even looking after our facilities here at the, at the region and at our local municipalities. These have been employed to a certain extent as outreach workers, making contact with the people on the street that are unsheltered, helping assist them to get them to places. And part of that requires... And part of that requires a rapport to be built up. When we first started the primary care outreach program, the unsheltered used to run away from our advanced care, paramedic and social worker because they saw someone in uniform. That was the, the paramedic. Until they started interacting in different ways and in different places. Well, that's what the security, the special, I like that word, special security, has been doing in Oshawa for the last two, three years. And it hasn't been, you know, just, uh, move along, uh, you're not allowed to stay here, uh, you know, you're violating a bylaw because we have them out in teams. It's again about connecting them, okay? And we wouldn't have these information, our by-name list that we have to help the unsheltered, that the social services department has, they're collecting similar, where are you from? The, the information that Mayor Carter gave a little while ago, we know that some people have just come down from, uh, Peterborough. Some people have moved in here from, uh, Toronto. And I'm not saying just to Oshawa. I'm sure they're, uh, throughout the region. So identifying that and allowing that to continue and with the region's assistance to the taxpayers of Oshawa, to a maximum of five hundred thousand dollars is excellent in recognizing that work that we're doing. The second and third part of this is also where we want to go because we need those outreach. And we've been talking about that for two or three years and trying to get it pushed forward. Twenty twenty-three budget had the two supervisors, right? Just like when we started the PCOP, the primary care outreach program, right? It, it, the pilot of it first started in Oshawa, as you well, we like to be leaders anyway, uh, in Oshawa. And then we expanded it to the, to the region in the following year. So it was going to all the other municipalities. We're, we're having a second one come on board. We're, we're, uh, adding the mental health piece to that type of, uh, of outreach worker. So having those supervisors and now having the Commissioner of Finance find us some more money, uh, what, what a great person she is, so that we can have twelve working. And I, in talking to the Commissioner of Social Services before, uh, we also have identified the times that we need them. This is not a Monday to Friday, eight to four, uh, problem. It's, it's at two o'clock in the morning, it's on a, on a Sunday, it's on a, it's on a Monday, it's throughout. And it's throughout the, uh, throughout the region, growing more. With Oshawa, as I said, ground zero, Ajax is probably the next biggest, uh, the next town with the biggest, uh, percentage. But we're seeing more in Whitby now. We've had, uh, some of the folks that we deal with, uh, through this, uh, venue have told us about what's happening in Whitby. I know that the other ones in Pickering and Clarrington and, and up north, we recognized the problem up north before and that's why we went towards this supportive housing, uh, issue that we needed to address that. So I think this, uh, motion, very nice compromise from where we were, uh, whenever, how many hours ago now? Hour and a half ago. This is excellent because it recognizes the work that we're doing in Oshawa as an outreach, not, not as a security move along, please. And that the need for it region-wide and that it's become a higher priority to get this done by the end of the year. And I have every confidence in our staff in getting that, subject to everybody else's issues of hiring staff, right? Because as much as we want to say, we want two supervisors and ten and we want them by the end of the year. Let's hope that those people are available once the treasurer, uh, you know, puts that money aside for us. Great job. And, and this will be good for the whole region in addition to working with whatever security levels all of the communities have, whatever bylaw officers they have, and of course, our police. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Sheehan.
Thank you so much. Through you, Chair Henry. I, uh, really appreciate the, Oshawa counselors and Ajax counselors speaking up. I think, uh, in my opinion, as leaders of the community and being elected, it gives us, uh, a huge onus on the fact that we have to make these tough decisions. These are our decisions to make. And I'm going to repeat what Counselor Malkai had said. At the endless home, uh, ending homeless symposium that we attended, the one thing that was my huge takeaway was we need to advocate the province and the federal government to fix this. Health and housing should go hand in hand to fix this issue. And that's exactly what is needed to happen. These are Band-Aid solutions. We are the leaders in the community. We have to make them. But there has to be an advocacy for these two, for the, for the province and the federal government. And the fact that there was no real dollars committed in the federal budget for this, it's a shame and we should be advocating for this. I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Yamada.
Thank you and, um, happy to support the motion here in front of us. I just think we need to get this right, especially when it comes to the 2024 business planning and budget process. If we don't, you're going to have other municipalities coming back asking for more than five hundred thousand dollars. Because we are seeing problems in downtown Whitby. We spent three and a half million on our downtown action plan to get business going, to get development going in our town. And now we're seeing an explosion of homelessness in the downtown that we've been working so hard to help rebuild. You're seeing problems, the, the, the ma- majority of the problems are happening in downtown Oshawa. And I thank Mayor Carter for advocating here. I, uh, was always going to vote against the initial, uh, motion because, uh, I feel that when I read the report and you hear that, you know, the region understands that there's limits to the role and resources of police services. Or we hear that cities and towns across the country are seeing an increase of mental health challenges, addictions, housing needs that are impacting businesses, community safety and well-being. We're seeing that the challenges are understood to be impacting businesses, economic growth and the recovery across the region. And that, the one that really got to me is that the number of people experiencing homelessness and derm is out, is growing and is outpacing the ability to create new housing units and wraparound support programs. So we need to get this right. We need to ensure that we're putting the programs and the policies in place to address these programs or municipalities, local area municipalities will be coming back and asking for cost sharing for special security at a greater cost of five hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Mayor Foster.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I think we need to go back in our history. Counselor Chapman, I'm looking at you. And you will recall where the counselor, or the counselor, ha, the commissioner, I would never do that. The Commissioner of Finance, that wonderful person, where she came from. For those of you who don't know, uh, for many years, she was the Director of Finance in Clarrington and, and did an equally fantastic job, uh, there. Mr. Chair, we are dealing specifically with item A, correct? The motion to divide.
Oh, it's done. The division is done. We're dealing with, uh, the entire item right now. We'll divide, we'll deal with the rest during the vote.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll speak specifically to, uh, you know, to that. To my mind, the reality is, uh, if we had, uh, a team or resources set up with DRP and outreach workers today, uh, if they'd been put in place a couple of years ago, uh, the focus would in fact be, uh, in Oshawa because that's where the greatest problem is, uh, with other areas, uh, as well on that. Uh, you know, I'll, I'll reflect on, um, both Counselor Yamada and Mayor Collier. Mayor Collier was identifying that Ajax has costs, Counselor Yamada suggesting that we've got to get it right or we will all be coming, uh, individually. There has been some dialogue from a couple of, of my colleagues from Oshawa over past costs. I would, I would suggest that we need to look towards the future because otherwise, there are going to be a lot of motions, uh, coming forward from each council representing their individual area. Uh, but, uh, this motion as it's, uh, you know, as it's written, recognizing where the problem is, the largest part of the problem, uh, and recognizing that moving forward, uh, you know, we need to deal with this, uh, more directly. So I'm, I, I am in support of, uh, in the entire motion for those reasons. Thank you.
So members of council, that exhausts the speaker requests all but me. And I do not speak from the chair very often. But our staff in the room here today, every day they live this, much like the staff in the communities at the, at the lower tier municipalities. And the stories that we hear each and every day break, break your heart. You know, today we're dealing with an issue and I'm happy that there is support for most of this in this chamber today. But Counselor Malkai said it earlier. You know, if AMO is talking about this, that's four hundred and forty municipalities. If the mayors of the big, uh, city mayors are talking about this, that fills out another big section of the province. And then the rural mayors speak about this. And then the mayors and regional chairs speak about this. And then at FCM, they speak about this. And that in every co- every city from coast to coast, to coast in this country is having the same challenge. Then call it what it is and call it a national crisis. You know, here we are picking up the, the challenges of what's going on on the taxpayers' bill. Remind that, uh, members of council, that the federal government gets half, well, gets our income tax and the HST and it's split amongst the province and it flows back down to us, that this is a national problem. You know, we didn't have challenges like this eight years ago, nine years ago. We had challenges with people that were not living well, but not like this. And of course, human trafficking wasn't really even mentioned until about seven years ago and the challenges related to that. So today we're doing something that is a start on a path, but that doesn't stop the advocacy on behalf of the councils across this country to remind the federal government that they have a challenge. If you were a recovering, uh, individual that had challenges, the first thing, part of recovery is that you have to admit that you have a problem. And this country has a problem. And it cannot be fixed by the residential taxpayer because we do not deal with mental health. We do not change the laws in this country. That judicial reform needs to have something and Mayor Carter and the other mayors in the group know that we're finally being heard after three years, that they're starting to think about judicial reform, but we don't have another three years to wait. You know, Mr. Hunt, the Director of our Legal Services, will tell you that our courtrooms are half-empty almost all the time now, every day. And we're lucky if we've got one courtroom functioning in the building. We have four. There's not enough JPs, there's not enough support services, there's not enough funding coming back down from the federal government to the provinces and it is sad. You know, we were heard a little while ago where we received an additional seven million dollars worth of funding from the province because for once, they're not listening to us, they're hearing us. I'm tired of giving lip service to the federal government and they're not hearing us. So we're eight municipalities with seven federal writings, you meet with your MPPs and your MPPs, your MPs, and you have a duty as regional counselors to bring the issue to them, to get into their face and talk about their lack of funding. I know I have and they're not hearing me. So I'm working on my new voice. This is my Leonard Cohen voice. It's called the daycare coop, hoop, if you have kids and daycare grandchildren in daycare. But I, I'm angry and I don't know where to direct that anger and it's not in this room and it's not to our municipalities. But do not direct your anger at our staff, our regional staff. Because they are going out every day and doing great things with, within the, the world that they can and I'm incredibly proud of them. But we also suffer with challenges with our, our seniors who are having their life savings stolen away from them and dealing with cybersecurity and all these other things. And we don't set the rules. It's not done at this table. And it can be fixed. I believe that all the money is in the system now to fix the challenges of homelessness, mental health and addictions. But Counselor Malkai said it, we're putting a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage because the rules aren't in place to truly fix it. So that is my rant for the day. I apologize. And Mayor Carter, from the great city of Oshawa, you have the opportunity to close.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your, um, your comments and your address and the challenge to all of us. I, I appreciate that. I want to start my comments off by thanking yourself, our CAO, uh, Ms. Austin, Ms. Taylor, and Alexander. Thank you very much for, uh, the work that has been done in, in, uh, trying to find a pathway forward. And I use the word forward because I think, uh, Mayor Foster is correct. This is about moving forward. I appreciate everybody's comments today, support and concern for their communities and the region. But I also really appreciate it that I'm feeling, um, very overwhelmed, uh, by the support of, uh, my colleagues. I am proud to serve, um, in this chamber now on my ninth year. And I am proud of the people that I serve with and many of you are, are close friends. And today I think that, um, um, that's being demonstrated widely and I, I don't want that to go unnoticed. I'm a great believer, uh, that this is a great start. I think that our bylaw, and I like what Sterling had to say in regards to our bylaw and security teams, working with these outreach workers, cross-training, train the trainer, uh, learn from one another, share our information. I think that's an important part and I'm hoping that we'll be able to make sure that's part of our component as we move forward with, um, this outreach team. I think it's, I think it's very, very important. I also, um, are very grateful, um, that we have taken ninety minutes to be able to discuss this. And to be absolutely honest, um, there was a comment by, by one of the counselors that said, there's more conversation today on this particular item than we've, we've had through budget talks or anything else. Well, I, I, I know this for a fact, Mr. Chairman, that yourself and myself, Counselor Chapman, and many in this room have had long, long debates, spirited conversations and have been advocating up, down, sideways, uh, left and right. So I, I believe, um, that there has been an urgency by all municipalities that are being represented here today, that all of them have been trying to make sure that their voice is being heard. I am pleased that an announcement three weeks ago with Minister Beth and Foley, that that investment of the extra seven million dollars came because all of you advocated and made sure that the Minister of Finance heard it and we were part of that announcement. I'm pleased that Minister Tavola will be meeting with the chair and myself and other people on May twenty-fourth in a special meeting that is, is his direct responsibility because he understands derm is going through, uh, some challenges, but also understands that we are trying to innovate as we go. Counselor Chapman and myself, I was reminded, uh, that we advocated for the PCOP program. And for some of you that weren't here, but were here, you remember it was quite a spirited conversation. Don't have the resources, there's not the staff in place, we don't have the trucks, all of that kind of stuff. Even Chief Cheesebro had a difficulty saying, I'm going to have to pull resources in regards to supporting this program. But down the line, we all saw that it was the right step at the right time for the right reasons. And we were able to make that investment, not just in the great city of Oshawa, but now we're seeing it all the way across the region and the PCOP teams are there. We also now have M-HOP that is out there and I'm, I'm hoping for their success. Yes, this is a starting point. We have to be looking forward and I agree with that. But we also have to have some spirited conversations about what's working, what's not working. And I know that this chamber is always a place of respect and a spirited debate. And I think today it was a great demonstration of what our regional council, uh, represents for the region. So on behalf of the people in the city of Oshawa, on behalf of eight hundred thousand people that call derm region home, I am proud of each and every one of my colleagues today and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your support. And to the regional staff, Mr. Chairman, thank you for, um, stopping the debate, saying that we need to find a solution moving forward. And I think that that really demonstrates, uh, there, there isn't us in them. I think it really demonstrated today that there is us. So thank you, sir. Recorded vote on everything, please.
Okay, so Mr. Clerk, recorded vote and we'll call the vote now on item A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on part A of the motion is starting now.
Okay, that vote carried. Okay, that vote carries. Uh, Mr. Clerk, I will call the vote on B and C together.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on parts B and C of the motion is starting now.
Mr. Clerk, that carries. Members of council, I think a 10-minute recess is in order. Moved by Counselor Chapman, I think the person seconded was Counselor Mayor Petri. On the 10-minute recess, all those in favor? Opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Mr. Clerk, we'll have to do a roll call again, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, members of council, we'll proceed with the meeting. We'll move on to item 7.2 on page 15. But before we do that, um, uh, Mr. Kilgore, do you want to explain what's happening today at 12:50, just so members of council and anybody watching is aware?
Um, yes, James Kilgore, I'm the Director of Emergency Management here at the region. Just want to let everyone know that the, today is the test of the alert-ready system. Rock's currently at 12:55. Today, we will receive on our phones, a alert from the province of Ontario testing the system. I just want to let you know it is a test. I know it could possibly go off in the chamber, but I'm just letting everyone, uh, know that. Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Kilgore, before you, before you, um, leave, um, our 311 staff are aware that today's a test?
Uh, yes, they are as well as, um, 911.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, members of council, on page 15, this is Project Woodward Disposition and Development of Regional Lands for Economic Development. Uh, recommendations there, um, Mayor Foster, are you moving the recommendations? Uh, Mayor Collier, are you seconding the recommendations?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded. Okay, thank you. Mayor Foster, do you wish to speak to the item?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll speak very, uh, very briefly to this and I'm going to wander a wee bit, so I'll look for your indulgence and, uh, and, and council committees indulgent. Uh, so, uh, thank you for this. This, this does to a degree highlight some of the challenges that Clarrington and our ECTV plans and the region's ECTV plans, uh, were, were thrown off of kilter with OPG's decision, uh, to, to move. And, and Mr. Chair, you'll recall that you and I were, were preparing to pick up the phone and look at companies that were interested or that had to, uh, move, uh, directly beside headquarters, uh, you know, in the energy park down there. Uh, so, so while it's a disappointment, we understand and, uh, you know, the, you know, the head office coming to Durham Region, uh, is, is a good thing, the jobs coming to Durham Region. And here's where I'm gonna veer off very, very briefly, uh, with a plaintive plea to each and every one of you. The nuclear industry, you all know, is a multi-billion dollar industry. $12.8 billion are being spent on the refurb. Uh, there is a very high likelihood, uh, that we will see greater sums spent in pickering. The refurb in Clarrington was the number one infrastructure program in Canada, across the entire nation, the most amount of money being spent. We've got the small modular reactor, uh, coming, we think, to Clarrington. That will be a multi-billion dollar business opportunity. Uh, so we've got at West Saskatchewan looking at, uh, at these units, the Tennessee Valley Authority, uh, looking at a significant number of the units, uh, the Poles are looking at a significant number of units, uh, Mr. Yelley, is it Lithuania? Anyway, there, there, there are a number of countries, uh, that are, are lining up. And then we have an issue moving forward, uh, in terms of supply chain with the deep geological repositories. So again, I'll mention billions and billions and billions of dollars by virtue of the fact that Durham Region is a willing host. And I would encourage all of you to talk to your ECTV officers, I would encourage all of you to ask your businesses how we participate in that. Uh, I would suggest that, uh, Durham has not participated, uh, to the ability that they could have. If you look at where the nuclear industry is, it is largely on the west end of Toronto. Uh, so, as you're talking with your business leaders, even if, if they just do takeout, uh, that could be supplying the nuclear supply chain, uh, as we're talking with the MPPs, the MPs, uh, the regulators, you should be asking them why more of the nuclear industry is not here in the host communities. Uh, and again, billions of dollars right in our backyard. Um, and I'm done. Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence, all.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Col, Mayor Collier.
Thank you, Chair, and just a couple of questions on the report actually. On page, on, uh, item 3.4, page 5 of 7, just the text, the main object is not necessarily to get the highest return, rather use a property to help achieve the overall vision for the energy park. And I, I agree with what Mayor Foster has said, I just wonder, um, lands that, first of all, we're gonna be probably thinking a million dollars an acre, which I think is light these days, it's about a $20 million purchase or sale. Given the last almost two hours just going through the issues that we're having in the region, I'm wondering where are the funds of this going to go? On this sale?
Ms. Hill?
Through the Chair. That question I hadn't put my brain to, but certainly given the council priorities and through discussion with the CAO, we would bring back some recommendation and thoughts around what that would be utilized for. I think part of the issue, and, and I see Simon looking at me, he may already have a plan, but, uh, I think as well, economic development investment, so often we generate things to generate other things. So, um, I would defer to whether Simon had any discussion already around this, but, uh, we would come back to council with recommendations of utilization of anything.
Go ahead.
Yes, uh, through the Chair. I think that, um, we would certainly defer to the Commissioner of Finance as to where the proceeds of the land sale would be allocated. Uh, it's our expectation that as we pursue our vision for this land, uh, it is a constricted set of uses that we're expecting to, a buyer to, uh, to agree to, which may affect the price of the land. It may impact the price to come down a little bit. And, uh, and that was, the purpose of this report was to bring that, that matter to light.
Okay, so, these lands were expropriated, so I imagine we paid a significant price for them. I just don't want to see us sort of throw the baby out of the bathwater here and just take something for a large loss. At the same time, we just spent the last almost two hours discussing a very significant issue in the region of Durham. And I think since we first started on economic development back around hard in 2018 approximately, things have changed quite a bit. And I think economic development is kind of happening, um, organically right now. I don't think any of us were having to look too hard the last couple of years to sell lands and have businesses come and make investments. So I'm going to suggest, and I'm not gonna try and amend this, but I'm gonna suggest that those funds maybe be more looked at as being allocated to help address our homelessness and social issues, that we're experiencing. Many municipalities have started looking at surplus lands that we have. Um, we have a homelessness, not a homelessness task force, but there's another one that I, I sit on with my DRPS hat where one of the, one of the options is, is planning and how do we get the planning approvals to use? do we get the planning approvals to use some of these surplus lands that are often commercial for temporary residential? And I think there's maybe a way where we can be diverting some of these funds to help move some of those things forward. And I just hope that will be part of the consideration, Chair. Thank you.
Members of council, that exhausts the speaker's list. So on the item, we'll call a vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Last item is report number 2020, and some, and under reports, 7.3 is report 2023, Cow 23 Development Lands Removed From The Green Belt. You'll find it on page 24. There is, there is a recommendation. Moved by Mayor Foster on the received recommendation, or received for information, sorry, and I'm looking for a secondary, Counselor Leahy. On the item is now on the floor, comments or questions? Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Related to this and through you, to the Commissioner of Planning, Mr. Bridgman, Clarrington is, we are really struggling with requirements from the province, including the short timelines that are required for lands that have been pulled out of the green belt. So I think every municipality that is seeing this, they jump to the front of the queue, we're doing secondary plans where we didn't know we were doing secondary plans. Our table is full, which means other stuff has to be delayed. And I've got developers almost on a daily basis chasing us. Are, are we doing any communications? Is there a way of bringing together the, the concerns of three municipalities impacted to let the province know that some of these rules are in fact not helping? They are slowing down applications that we could putting, you know, be putting a stamp, a seal of approval on by virtue of the government saying, you're gonna do this first. It's, to put it frankly, it's really screwing our planning departments up, not helpful in any way, shape or form. Is there a way that you can help us with a report or comments or advocacy on that? Do you hear my frustration?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. At nearly every opportunity, the province has been advised of comments, not just from Durham Region, but from across the province, in terms of some of the practical impacts that some of the changes are causing, and the, what we call the unintended consequences. If you do this, then it really could slow things down. For example, Mr. Chair, on the Planning and ECTV Committee on June the 6th, there's a report coming forward on the new provincial policy statement, which makes some other changes to the planning regime. And in that document, some of these unintended consequences will be explained and the concerns we have.
Thank you. Mr. Bridgman, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. But I, I know so many of us are so very, very deeply frustrated. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, members of council. That exhausts the requests online. Do we have any requests? No? Then I'll call a vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Members of council, that moves on to section eight, confidential matters. There are two items here. We'll deal with A first. Is there any member of council that needs to go into closed session for item A? Can I get a mover of the recommendation, please? Mayor Foster? Seconded by Counselor Lee. On the recommendation, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Report, the second report, item B, 2023 Cow 22, is there a need to go into closed session? I need a mover, please? A move by Counselor Mayor Piatri, seconded by Counselor Shaheed. We'll call the vote on the item. All those in favor? Okay. Mr. Clerk, that's the business of the day, so the only thing left to do would be to wish everybody a Happy McDay, Happy McHappy Day, and to look for an adjournment motion. And there is lunch in the back. So Mayor Ash, unadjourned. Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Wu. Unadjourned, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries.